Okay.
Right, now, the official wrap.
Okay.
Call this meeting to order, the city council meeting for the city of Holiday Island for April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Will call. Okay, councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Coon.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Everyone present, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll declare a quorum. Uh, moving on to approving the agenda, we had put an item on the agenda just in case tonight, um, the first item under new business, the ordinance repealing the old district court agreement and, and approving the latest version of it. Uh, I had, you know, hope springs eternal. I had hoped to have all the signatures from the county on the agreement by today. That didn't happen, and I'm not going to go through the prob, through the exercise of approving another version of the agreement until I have all the signatures. We've gone through, I think, three at least evolutions of this same agreement already, and that's too many false starts to worry about again. So we're going to scratch that from the agenda tonight, and we'll add it back to the agenda at some future meeting.
Can, can we at least leave it on there to have a little bit of discussion about?
I, I had an update on it in the under old business.
Okay.
Uh, okay, um.
I could if we strike the ordinance two oh two three dash oh one two from the agenda.
Oh, second.
Have I approved the agenda as of then?
Yes, I approve as of then.
Second.
I was at the motion to approve the agenda, striking the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one two, within a second of it. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Second. Okay.
Opposed? Right, the amended agenda is approved. We have minutes from the March twenty-first meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I can motion we approve the minutes.
Can we have one?
Twenty-one mark.
Minutes from twenty-one March, do I have a second?
Second.
Mark of second of it, any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right, the minutes are approved. Um, I put under, under ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, and memoriam. I put the community church anniversary. This is a little bit after the fact, because they've already had their celebration, and I've already done the proclamation, but I did want to read it into the official city record. Uh, so, a proclamation from the city of Holiday Island. On this, the thirtieth anniversary of the Holiday Island Community Church, the city of Holiday Island is hereby make the following proclamation. Whereas for the past thirty years, the Holiday Island Community Church has faithfully attended to the spiritual and material needs of its congregation, and whereas through out, through outreach beyond their congregation, the Holiday Island Community Church has contributed significantly to the building of the spirit of community in the city, and whereas it is fitting to celebrate the strength and vitality of the Holiday Island Community Church and the impact it has on the city, now therefore, on behalf of the city of Holiday Island, Mayor Dan Keyes does hereby proclaim April second, twenty twenty-three, as Holiday Island Community Church Appreciation Day, and the city wishes the congregation all the best as it moves forward into the future. They had a really nice, um, get-together after their service on the second, and it is, it is a fine community church. They really know how to put on a dinner.
That's always the mayor's heart around here, the dinner part.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm doing this just not as an agenda item, but just under recognition. Um, this past Friday, the Holiday Island Hospitality Association did their twice annual, or once, once of the twice annual roadside cleanup activities, and over the years, this, they've been doing this for years and years, and, you know, some years we had good turnout, sometimes not so good. This time, for whatever reason, we had thirty-one volunteers.
Wow.
Plus, the fire department, uh, that provided escort for the people walking on the belong to busy roads, uh, which was also volunteers, David was one of them. And, uh, and then our, the Carroll County Sheriff's Department provided a couple of deputy escorts. They collected fifty-three bags of trash. So, uh, that was a fantastic turnout. We even had at least one person from Eureka Springs there, a guy that hikes with the Holiday Island hikers pretty regularly. So, uh, it was a great turnout. That's the good part about it. I hate to troll in a little bad, but the next morning, along Highway twenty-three already, there was two big pieces of plastic trash and a beer can. So it didn't even last. It looked a lot better than it did, but, you know, for some reason, people these days can't seem to.
What is that? Yeah. You're saying themselves sign over on that, on the road, on the cash bill that people often turn off when.
So it's the cheap lot trash of the person.
You're referencing people that do the littering or trash. Now, it was quite kind of a neat little sign, you know, like the old worm machine.
But Terry and I, just a little side kind of funny thing, Terry and I and Ken Brown and Doug Smith did from twenty-three, from the, we did Highway twenty-three from the front entrance down to one eighty-seven, which is a long ways.
That's a long one.
And, uh, we were tired when we were done. But next to beer cans, the second largest single item that we picked up was all the little reflectors that they put on the center lane. The, the snowplow got like ninety percent of them.
Oh, no.
I think Terry and I had close to thirty of them, and you probably had that amount, too.
There you go.
So, um, I was going to call hard out and say they need to come up with a better idea of this.
Well, I saw you guys walking along there as I was driving back from Eureka into Holiday Island, and you were on the side of the road that fell off.
Yeah.
To the valley.
Well, depending on where you're at.
You had absolutely no way, I mean, I don't know how you picked up on that side of the road, because there was no room for you to walk.
There, there was only a couple of little stretches like that. Most of it, there was ditch where you could get down. Any other ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations? Then we'll move on to financial statements. Oh, what is that?
I guess I'll wait till the end.
Okay.
Nothing in there.
Financial statements.
Okay. Well, we have the financial statements for March up on the screen. You can see at the end of March, total cash on hand in the bank was five hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, about two thirty-seven of that is general funds, seventy-five thousand is in our reserve account, and two twenty-three in the street fund. Uh, as far as the general fund, revenue and expenditures, um, let's see, yeah, that's revenue. Would you go down a little bit? Okay, our revenue for, um, March was twenty-two thousand, bringing up to seventy-six thousand for the year. If you go back up to the beginning, um, you can see our county sales tax revenue is, so far this year is fifty-nine thousand. That's about twenty-two point eight percent of the budget. And I thought, well, why wasn't it twenty-five percent? And I look back, and that's pretty comparable to where we were last year. I think that's at about twenty-three percent, and last year it was like just under twenty-four percent. Um, municipally, uh, twenty-one percent of the budget, and I think we'll be getting, I think there's a, um, preliminary payment in July, which will boost that up. Um, so other than that, um, of course, no district court fines, permits. Uh, we've received fifty-four hundred already this year, which is all, which is, um, forty, that was forty-four percent of the, of the annual budget, and that's all, um, building permits. And then solid waste, uh, we're fifteen percent, that's a minor item. That's the sale of the bag tanks, um, for people to put trash down in the dumpster. Um, and going through the expenses, administrative expenses, um, you can see the salaries are about eighteen percent of the budget. Uh, other expenses, and some, one, a major one, of course, dues and licenses. We've already spent ninety-five percent of the budget, and that, most of that is municipally dues, which are paid in January. Um, otherwise, and you go on down, uh, um, building and construction were eighteen, eighteen percent of the budget, so we're below twenty-five percent. Um, their total expenses, year-to-date, are twelve hundred dollars versus, uh, fifty one hundred for other expenses. Um, road enforcement, eight hundred during March, making a total of seventeen hundreds for the year, and you can see we're only seven percent of the budget there. And Aaron doesn't have a lot of, uh, expense there. Uh, expenses, um, like computer ads, twenty-one percent, uh, and equipment is twenty-five percent of the budget. District court, one small bill there, fifty-seven dollars for attorney fee is what that was. And as you go on down, uh, planning commission has, uh, hundred and thirty-three dollars in legal fees, year-to-date, four hundred and eighty-one. And other expenses, again, the computer ad, that's for items related to our computer security. So we're below, um, twenty-five percent there. Public safety, our only expenses so far has been for rent and electricity for the sheriff's office, um, four hundred and twenty-eight for the month, fourteen hundred and fifty-nine year-to-date. Um, and we have, had no payments on the sheriff contract yet, and I think that's going to start for some March, or, well, they're billing us for March probably. I haven't seen a bill for it.
Yeah, if they don't, if we don't see a bill pretty soon, we'll have to, you know, call them and remind them, because the contract was effective March first, so they should be billing us for the hundred and thirty hours they did patrol.
And then, uh, solid waste, uh, you can see we've had, didn't have any illegal dump cleanups this month. We've had a hundred and forty-one dollars for the year, and, um, I'm going to have to check that. I don't think that Cox Internet should be there. Uh, that's seventy-nine dollars, I'm going to have to look at that. Uh, so our total expenses for March were fourteen thousand dollars, bringing us to forty-five thousand for the year, so, um, and there were no extraordinary expenses. Okay, if you want to go on to the, go ahead, keep going, Mr. Mayor. No, there's, that's a reserve fund there, no activity in that, seventy-five thousand in there. Uh, the street fund. Oh, where is this? Oh, there we go. Um, the street fund, uh, there was sixteen thousand in revenue during March, that's, uh, most of that was state revenue, all, there was only seventeen hundred dollars in, uh, county property tax, because those will just be starting to come in shortly. Um, so you can see the, as far as the state funds are tracking pretty close to budget, they're twenty-six percent, twenty-two and twenty-four percent, and we had one expense of three hundred and thirty-two dollars, and I think that was to the highway commission for.
Bridge inspection.
Bridge inspection. So, in the. So in the, uh, street fund, there's a balance of two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
All right, okay, uh, just a couple of comments on that. You know, we're, we're, I don't wanna say we're artificially in really good shape right now, but one of the reasons why we do have the strong balances we have is because some of the things that we had budgeted for from an expenditure standpoint, starting earlier in the year, haven't kicked in yet. Like Wes said, we just now got our first, um, month under our belt for the sheriff's contract. But even at that, I'll report on the status of the deputies here in a little bit. But we haven't seen the, uh, you know, what the, what the total cost of that should be running. We haven't seen that yet. And, um, and if, when, not if, but when we finally get this district court agreement signed, Aaron will be, will be kicking Aaron into high gear, um, and, um, starting to enforce some of our nuisance ordinances. And, um, so his, you know, that, that expense will start to go up a little bit. On the revenue side, I think the county sales tax is cyclical with tourist business and because they get a lot of their tax revenue out of Eureka Springs and, and, and the tourist shopping at Walmart. So, um, that I'm sure will be on track by the end of the year.
Move to accept the credit report, Dave.
I have a question. Uh, workers' comp, uh, what is it, do you, you pay, why do we, do we have to pay that early or how does that work? I thought it was like payroll, part of the payroll taxes.
Well, I think the workers' comp would be an annual premium.
I, when I did it, it used, it was, I thought it was just like bringing, you know, like.
We had a bill from the league for that. From their workers' comp fund.
Okay, okay, I never saw it, I didn't know you ever paid it out.
It was, it was based on our projected, uh, wages.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay, motion to approve the, uh, financial statements.
I'm moving to accept.
Jury, move to accept the financial statements, second?
I'll second.
Second it, any more discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Uh, planning commission.
You folks met without me last week and, um, I.
Not because we wanted to.
I understand your struggles. What the planning commission has to decide is just how far we wanna go with the most recent examinations. Whether we wanna go all the way to, uh, putting in language to cover subdivision development or stop with just the minor lot splits and make that happen. It sounds like we're probably gonna stay on the shorter end of the stick. That's the work we have planned for next Thursday, I think, the workshop, the workshop, to work on it some more.
Okay, and, uh, then Rodman, Gary?
Uh, off to a slow start, they canceled the April meeting, the Eureka Springs, the Changer Expo. So you don't meet again until first Tuesday.
Kinda anxious to see what, uh, what's your name, people? Who's the one with the scene, Sandy? What Sandy comes up with for, uh, the data gathering survey. Because that's when we're gonna have to get some boots on the ground trying to collect the data that they want. Okay, moving on then to deputy report. I, I distributed it to, uh, the council or what have been on the, the meeting documents. They patrolled a hundred and thirty hours in March, which is not even half of the number of patrol hours that we would get, have if we had two deputies. And I did talk to the, uh, to Lieutenant Bellin and asked him for an update on where they are on that. He said, I'll just read what he said. "We've been putting a real effort into having people in Holiday Island. We just had one of our new hires graduate from the academy, which will free up a transfer of one of the officers that has put in to be the first designated Holiday Island deputy. So we should be getting that one very soon, a full-time, assigned deputy. Uh, we're running a school this week at the department for those of us who have come from another state. Some of the new, um, deputies, including Lieutenant Bellin himself, have come here from Missouri, I think, and they're certified in Missouri, but they have to take a class to get certified in Arkansas, so, um, he said that, uh, that was one of the hurdles we had to cross to get you, the guy, to get you the first officer. We will find, uh, and, you know, beyond that, he didn't say anything about where they are in getting the second deputy, so he's focused on getting us our first one first. And then as far as getting the car, which they won't need until they get the second deputy, uh, he was gonna get with the sheriff and give me an update, I haven't gotten that yet. So they're still working on staffing, and, uh, I would expect here another week or so, we'll probably at least get our one full-time patrol officer back again. In the meantime, in the hundred and thirty hours that they did patrol, they had twelve traffic stops, six citations and six warnings. That's, um, the thing that most people are interested in, although, um, it is interesting when you look at some of the other things that they did respond to, like, uh, eight welfare checks. Now, when I say welfare check, I don't mean delivering welfare checks.
Who said I didn't give?
They're, you know, somebody's been trying to call their friend or relative and they can't get any response, so they, they want the, uh, the deputy to go and check up, check it out. They did have one felony arrest and two misdemeanor arrests, and I, I'm gonna try to find out a little more information about that. So it, it's, it's, it's still almost, you know, almost half of what they do out here is, uh, kind of incidental things due to the, kind of the makeup of the, of the people that live in Holiday Island. Like one unattended death, um, and then the welfare checks and stuff like that. They did have seventeen suspicious vehicles and suspicious persons, so, uh, apparently the Holiday Island people are good if, with the, you know, if you see something, say something. They're, uh.
They would have watched along the road.
And that's good, that's good, if they follow up on that, then the bad guys know we're watching.
Can I ask, ask a question about that? Uh, I think it was a planning commission meeting, the gentleman came and talked about the mattress and the squatter.
Yeah, I didn't do anything with that either.
No, I know, but, I mean, I, that was, I don't know if that would be in their territory. What, what would the deputy be asked to do if they come across something like that?
No, I think for like.
Squatter, I think if this squatter was on it, they, they could do something with it.
I think they'd call the Corps of Engineers because it's on the Corps of Engineers.
Why, why if it's like in the middle of Holiday Island?
Yeah, historically, the district has handled it. And may, maybe when Aaron was, was still on board yet, he might have, uh, over there and rotted him. But I know that the district manager, you know, in the past has been personally involved in, in, uh, getting squatters removed, so.
But that's not what they're supposed to be doing.
So who is supposed to be rottin' squatters?
If anybody's in the city.
I would think that would be the, the, that would be the deputy if he's in.
The district has no authority and their dollars are not supposed to be spent in that.
Yeah.
They have no personnel.
It's trespassing.
Wouldn't do it. At least Aaron has code enforcement, he can take a deputy with him.
It's trespassing, so the sheriff would take care of it.
Yeah, well, uh, other than that one mattress down there, I'm not aware of any problem in, in Holiday Island.
Well, I mean, I, when you say suspicious persons, uh, I mean, I've encountered three or four last week, walking up Table Rock Drive with a backpack of bedroll.
There were two of them sitting by the bank, one was, you know, homeless people, I assume. Sitting by, one was sitting by the gas station with a little sign, and one was sitting by the bank with a little sign, you know, give me money, but I haven't, I haven't seen them other than that one weekend.
Yes, sir.
I think they will very soon find out that this isn't a very lucrative place to, to get.
I, I don't know. It's kind of, it's concerning.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, if, if people see it, it's, it's appropriate to report them, but it's not illegal to walk down the road. And, um, I don't know what they even want the deputy to do other than stop them and ask them what their business is.
Well, that, that goes a long ways on that.
Yeah.
Dan, I have a question. I noticed on the deputy, on the, the monthly calendar report, uh, there was a day or two that had two hours. Do they count their drive time over from very long?
I, I don't know that, but I.
Could we find out?
Yeah, we, I can find out, but my guess is that they don't make a special trip over here to patrol Holiday Island. When they're going through, they swing in and put a couple hours in patrol, since they don't have anybody assigned right now.
Yeah, I'd like you to find out more about that because two hours seems like such a short amount of time, especially if they include the drive time.
Yeah, that would only be one natural patrol.
Yeah.
Did I understand what you said, Dan, about if somebody volunteered or was asked to? That being one of the reasons here?
Somebody asked to be, to be assigned to.
So, I mean, does that mean that he, that he lives here? Do we know that? That's really nice.
Okay, uh, I had an interesting experience today, and I assumed we would have a similar service here. I was in the Sam's parking lot, taking the cart back to the rack, and my siren and my phone starts going off. I don't know what I did, but anyway, I got it to quit and walked back to the car, didn't think anything about it. And a little bit, here, nine-one-one calls, man wants to know if I'm okay. Who asks me my name and.
Well, there's, some, some phones have an alert that you've fallen, and, I mean, it's an alert you would set or something. If it detects a fall or something, like they will call and check on. My Apple Watch does it.
Maybe that's what it was. Did you fall down?
You have an Apple Watch?
No.
I don't know.
All right, moving on. Old business update on the district court agreement. Uh, we finally got the final draft from the, the lawyers. I have the signatures of the, um, the mayor and the clerk in Eureka Springs. And, um, uh, so I need, um, Judge Ryder to sign it. And then Connie Dawson signed it. She can't sign it until the judge signs it because all she's doing is attesting that the judge signed it. So, because she has no authority to approve agreements or anything like that. So as soon as Judge Ryder signs it.
Is he balking it in?
Huh?
Is he balking it in?
No, uh, I, I haven't been able to talk to him directly. I dropped off a copy, everybody that was involved, everybody that had to sign it. I dropped off a copy with a cover letter two weeks ago. And, uh, and, and noted that I would be coming around to gather signatures. And, um, I had never heard from Judge Ryder, so I called him and left him a message, and he didn't return my call. So I went over there yesterday, and, um, he, no, yesterday too, yeah, I went over there yesterday and he wasn't in. And I talked to Rhonda, and she said that she would make sure that he would, uh, get it. But today, when I called over there, she said that he was in a meeting all day, getting ready for the forum court meeting tonight. So he hadn't done anything today other than try to prepare for the forum court meeting. So I'm hoping tomorrow, with the forum court meeting behind him, he'll have five minutes to sign that agreement because this really doesn't impact the county at all. The only reason they have to sign it is because the county pays half of the district court cost in Eureka Springs and Holiday Island, they're gonna split the other half. So it's, it has no impact on them whatsoever, but since they're, they pay a part of the cost, they have to be on the agreement. So I'm gonna keep nagging, that's all I can do. I did talk to the district court clerk and asked her to set up a follow-up meeting with Judge Ramsey and the clerk and the assistant clerk, uh, for me and, uh, Aaron White, so that we can go through the mechanics of how to get on, you know, if we, if we are gonna issue a citation, how do we get a court date to put on the citation? How does, how does the communication flow go between the court and the prosecuting attorney and the city and everything else? So we need to understand the mechanics of all of that. So we're, we're still making progress, and boy, I tell you, we can't, I just, we can't wait. I mean, I get so many calls and Aaron gets so many calls from people that are just totally fed up with our inability to enforce our ordinances because of this dang district court agreement that we've been working on for a year and a half now. Partly held up because of the sheriff's contract that we had to have first.
Uh, you, you don't think that Judge Ryder has, as an opposition, or signing this?
I don't, I don't know why he would, but I don't either. I haven't talked to him personally about it, and, and, uh, he should know by the cover letter that.
Well, I can't, I can't take five minutes to sign it, Dan, if that happens.
It's just not his priority, I guess.
Well, I know, but it, he needs to make it his priority.
Yep, I'll, I'll keep working on that.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I called Jack Eaton to see if he knows something about it.
If it doesn't get signed tomorrow, I probably will.
Okay, I, if you don't, I will.
Okay, moving on to new business. Consider filling the, uh, part-time clerical position. Um, I did send out a, uh, job description for that person. I think it's, you know, first of all, I think it's important that we be able to post regular office hours and to be able to have somebody here three hours a day, five days a week. You know, that was our plan when we put the budget together for this year, and I think we need to move forward with that. I don't get a lot of complaints about it because there's always phone numbers to call, but it would be a lot. We would be serving the public a lot better if we did have regular office hours. We need to have somebody working on reconciling the, uh, the, um, Trail Commis Office Base, um, customer list with the water meter customer list. We know that there still are some people that aren't signed up. I don't know how many that is anymore because, um, Jordan Boatwright, you know, has told me that, uh, that they've had a lot of. Jordan Boatwright, you know, has told me that, uh, that they've had a lot of people sign up. Even, you know, even like early this year, they still had people signing up. So he's confident that we have the majority of the people out, out here signed up. But we know for a fact that there's some that aren't yet. And if we have the district court agreement, that's the first thing, one of the first things we want to attack is, uh, is getting these people to quit burning their trash from the backyard or just throwing it in the backyard and building a pile or something like that.
So at, at one point CCSW sent us a link, list of kickouts from the Hi-Sid files of water meter customers versus their people who've been signed up for trash. That was done initially. That hasn't been done since, right?
No.
So that would need to be done.
I tried to keep it up that one time, but, um, you know, the two files are so dissimilar and, you know, in some cases they have, you know, the, the address of the, of the property owner instead of the renter or, you know, it, it, it's not real easy to do because of the way it's set up.
So it does take some manual work.
It's, it takes manual work. What I'm hoping is that we can get, that whoever we hire has good computer skills and can get a file set up and then go to Carroll County Waste and have them use that same exact database and, uh, and inform us if somebody quits paying for the trash so that we can jump right on it and, and start knocking on doors. We don't want to have to do a, you know, fifteen hundred name reconciliation every couple of months to see what the changes are. Somebody needs to be informing us as to what the changes are so that we can keep up with it. It is so much easier in the cities that just add it to the water bill and then they don't have to worry about it. But we don't have that option. So those are the primary things, but there's other things they can do like respond to the FOIA requests. Um, take minutes at the meetings. Are you good? So, um, I guess, uh, we budgeted for fifteen hours a week at fifteen dollars an hour and that's what I would propose we move forward with it. If, uh, if you want to approve me filling the.
I have a couple of questions. Did you have, did you find the place physically to locate these persons?
Wes and I are talking about that. Uh, Wes doesn't need to be in the office that much primarily just to write checks. So we could probably, um, set, you know, just a check processing station up as opposed to a desk and, uh, and then rearrange all the furniture in there. We got to get rid of a bunch of those.
I hope you.
Not, not so much the file cabinets as copying machines. We got copying machines coming out of our ears and they're, you know, they're old. We use two of them, the other two we don't. And, uh, but I don't have a clue how you get rid of an old copying machine.
May sixth, the.
Put it, put it down where the lake?
It says the. No, May sixth, they won't take electronics.
Well, you take it down, you take it down to the recycle center and everything.
They do take them?
They'll take computer.
Okay, well, I'll probably be doing that.
I was trying to all those to get an answer.
The, there's one from the old planning commission that's just an antique and they didn't even use it anymore. The taller one that does all the fancy schmancy collating and double sided printing and all of that kind of stuff. Um, they were still using it. We've never plugged it in, but they were still using it, so it probably works. But it's so old that I don't think anybody would want it because of the maintenance. And you'd never get a service contract on it.
Um, what, what, we, we talked about surplus property of capitalized.
We talked about doing a capitalized listing.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I mean, instead of, I mean, the one that doesn't work, technically, no, but it's working, shouldn't we declare it surplus and offer the sale?
Dave?
Yeah.
First come, first served. Have one other question important.
We're free if you haul it off.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just.
It's all functionality and then you could buy a desktop for two hundred bucks to be ahead of the scale.
Somebody might buy it for parts. If there's somebody around here that does service them, they may buy it for parts. I will do that. We'll, I'll get the.
Thing to do.
I'll get the information off of it and we'll try to advertise that we have it. And, uh.
I would suggest.
Are you going to have this person attend the meetings or are you going to do it by the recording? Take the minutes from recordings or?
Um, I don't know what works the best.
Well, she, if he or she attended, uh, they would go through like the motions for sometimes it's hard to tell.
My guess is they'll attend the meetings.
All right, I, I think it's a good idea. I think it's needed. I think we need to go forward with it.
I'll second that.
So is that a motion?
I guess so. I'm just saying I agree, I, indeed.
So you want to make a.
I'll make a motion to, to, we received retiring the person to fill this position.
I'll second.
We have Ken made a motion to fill the, uh, office assistant position. Lynn seconded it. Any further discussion?
I, I, all I would say is computer skills, good, really good computer skills are being nuts.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Uh, we need to create, I think we need to create an official job posting on our page because we are a city.
I think.
You know, equal opportunity and all that stuff. We're going to do it right.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, we'll get something open on that.
You know, I can take this job description and post it as is. Unless you want to make any changes to it.
Um, no.
Um, would we, would we ever want to get to where we actually, with Epsa, make our own posting like the district's doing now or are we just going to continue to piggyback on that?
You mean a news line?
Yeah. There we go, seconded.
We did. Um, Linda asked if, uh, she should post this, so I think you need to decide if you're going to have a timeframe for closing and all that, so that you follow the EOC stuff.
Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven and ordinance revising the zoning map and zoning map table for unit three oh one, block four, block five within the city of Holiday Island and declaring an emergency. But I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one.
I'll move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second? You want to read it?
I'll try to get through that. It's an ordinance revising the zoning map and zoning map table for the unit three oh one, block four, block five within the city of Holiday Island and declaring an emergency. Whereas on about October fourth, twenty twenty-two, the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty twenty-two dash six to provide line and zoning regulations, the zoning map and zoning map table for, within the city. And whereas the, uh, address information for unit three oh one, block four, block five, which is UBL three oh one four oh five, was not available due, available prior to adoption of the ordinance twenty-two dash six. And whereas on or about March twenty-fourth, twenty-three, the city was notified by a registered person that the address can now be confirmed on the Carroll County Assessor Data Scout website. And whereas this constitutes an exceptional circumstance, the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to amend the zoning map and text in the zoning map table by ordinance. Now therefore, view ordained by the city council, the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, section one, the document entitled zoning map shall be amended by including UBL three oh one dash four dash five within the unit three oh one and is hereby adopted. Graphic shows this piece of property right here being part of three oh one.
Is that last?
This is last corner, this wedge right here was not in our current map. Section two, that the document entitled zoning map table shall be amended by adding the text of the street address information for UBL three oh one four five with fourteen park drive and is hereby adopted. So that data is added right in here. In the current table, it says not available. Section three, that the documents entitled zoning map and the zoning map table shall be updated and reprinted newly certified filed with the city recorder treasurer, the city office, and be available on the city website within thirty days. Section four, the declaration of emergency, is hereby found and determined that the amendments to the zoning map and zoning map table should be adopted immediately in order to provide clarification of the street addresses of UBL three oh one four five within the city of Holiday Island and the line within standing of interested persons. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist in this act being immediately necessary for the preservation, protection of the peace, health, safety, welfare of the city and this citizen shall become effective on the date that it's passing and approval by the mayor, passing through the state. And there's two attachments, a copy of Carroll County website data scout where it shows fourteen park drive associated with unit three oh one, block four, block five, and the map shows us this wedge of property.
It looks like it's improved.
Yes.
Yes, uh, there's a house on the lot that property owner man is aware of the fact that, that, um, he didn't show up on.
On the map.
And apparently the short history on that is, is that at some point in the past, um, he asked Tom Dees if, uh, if, if Tom could carve off a piece of that large parcel that's just to the south of, of that, um, area and, uh, sell it to him so that he could build a house. And Tom did, but it never, uh, the information just never made it to, to, um, either Hi-Sid or us.
I might comment in our research in trying to get our zoning map table accurate, the reason it wasn't found is because its legal is deficient. We did searches based on things that looked like three oh one dash four dash five and block five didn't show up in the search. That's why it was missed. You know, I couldn't find it because it was called block five. I had no idea who, who the owner was.
All right, is there any further discussion on the ordinance? That I'll call for a rule call vote. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Booth?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman? All in favor, Mr. Mayor? The ordinance passes and since there is an emergency clause, I'll need a motion to, uh, adopt the, or approve the emergency clause. I can motion we approve the emergency clause.
I'll second it.
Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven. That seconded it. Any discussion? Both call a vote. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Booth?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, Booth? Seconded their original motion. I'll summarize your other ideas and get it out.
I moved it, I second.
Yeah?
Oh, the original, no, the original, Linda seconded it.
Yeah, I did.
Original. Your original.
Lynn made it.
Lynn made it. And Linda seconded it. Okay. Okay, last item under new business, uh, consider investing in a CD. With, you know, when, when interest rates on CDs were, you know, a tenth of a percent or something like that, it didn't pay to, to worry about it. But now that you can get, you know, five to six percent on CD, uh, I think we need to consider taking at least part of our seventy-five thousand dollars that we have in our general fund reserve and, and investing that in a CD. It can still, I guess, could, it would still remain part of the reserve, but it would be an investment in that reserve fund. If, if we, if we, uh, there's seventy-five thousand in there now, if we take fifty thousand of it and buy a CD and get five percent, you know, that's revenue we didn't otherwise have. And, um, you know, the, now, my recommendation would be that the interest stay in the reserve account and not be transferred to the general fund to help build up our reserve fund. Uh, because if we ever need or want to do something big time as a city, we're going to need big time reserve funds. And, um, and I would recommend that, um, we do like the district does, send out a, an RFQ basically or let the, what, three banks bid on it and, uh, see what kind of interest rates we get. So if, uh, I'll open the, open it up for discussion, but if everybody thinks that's a good idea, then for the next meeting, I would, you know, we would probably do this in resolution form. Create a resolution stating, um, you know, what banks we're going to do. Maybe, or how many banks we're going to get votes from, what we're going to do with the money and stuff like that.
I would think you would be able to communicate. Back on and, and put it into effect.
If I get that, if I get that district court signature tomorrow, I'm going to call a special meeting anyway. I've been led that way for.
I just said.
Yeah, I, I, we could do it at that time.
I think, uh, using fifty probably is okay and I, I don't, you know, I don't. Or she is using it anyway.
Yeah.
But if, but if you have, if you have to cash the CD, you pay it free.
Yeah, but.
You don't lose the principal.
You don't lose the principal, right? You may have to pay all the interest back.
You know, from behind them, we're just even at there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a very good idea.
Okay, then, uh, I'll prepare a resolution and circulate it around for people to comment on. Uh, all right, that's the last agenda item. Public comments? Ken?
No, Mike.
That's a new leader.
Uh, Ken Brown, Cypress Point Lane. Uh, I like your idea of, uh, CD. Uh, the district is doing real well on it. Our church just put some money in it and, uh, direct around five percent, four point seven percent. So I like to see you using, uh, your money that way, gaining some money. Uh, the other, uh, you said you had a few pieces of equipment. Uh, the district recently had the purple, purple wave auction and we made two hundred thousand dollars on selling a lot of stuff. This purple wave company comes in, we don't do anything. They just go around to the different sites and, uh, the, uh, managers tell them what's to be, uh, available to sell. This podium, that camera, this tripod, and they make the list.
You're telling us, you're telling us we can sell all this stuff?
Yeah, just, no, I thought it was yours. No, but anyway, you're two.
You have that on record, the.
You're, you're two.
EOC commissioner.
Your, your two printers could, maybe you could talk to them that they come here. And, uh, they're just, uh, sold immediately, a lot of stuff, just a lot of stuff, purple wave. The last question I have is, uh, there's been some confusion, uh, on my street and also in Holiday Island, and here's a question. Are HI residents able to park RVs and trailers on their property or on their driveway permanently? Now, the covenants sometimes say for Holiday Island VOC or district that you can pull your vehicle up, load it, put frozen food in, unload it, so forth. I'm not sure how many days that is, probably three. But the question is that I've been getting a couple of calls and I said I'd go to the city and that's you, council, and find out what is the rule, what is the code, what is the regulation on RVs and motorhomes?
It's, it's in our zoning ordinance, so Lynn's pulling it up right now. I can tell you right now that it's not as restrictive as what the covenants are because, you know, the, the law really doesn't allow us to be that restrictive.
But I think, just off the back of my head, it's forty-eight hours to load and unload a different house.
I was, I was here a few months ago and, and I asked similar question, but the, the problem with the covenants is, uh, you have to get a lawyer. Fifty-one percent of the people in your area, covenant area, have to get a lawyer. And we've tried that before and one of the lawyers that we asked was a five thousand dollar retainer and he did not want to sue that group because, uh, some of those members use that attorney for their own, um, legal matter, okay? So if you sue Larry over here and, and I'm the attorney, Larry's not gonna use me probably again. But anyway, it's very difficult, uh, to get five thousand bucks from the fifty-one percent and to get the fifty-one percent.
I don't know. I remember us doing that and I thought it ended up that they could do that for, if you had somebody visiting, you think it'd park it there.
It's in there.
It's in there.
It's in there somewhere.
If you have people staying, then it's, they can't use it as a second residence.
It probably gave them like three days or something.
I think we give them seven.
There he is.
Seven days.
It says the boat trailer recreation vehicle is not parked in the area between the front of the residence and the street or other area between the structure and the street except for the purpose of loading and unloading for a period of not more than twenty-four hours. So they can't park it in those places for more than twenty-four hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, it has to be operational, has to be registered and licensed.
I look down at G.
Yeah.
And G, recreational vehicles may be inhabited by visitors to a residence for a period not to exceed seven calendar days.
That's one I remember today.
The, the question is, uh, that they want to avoid the storage fees. Uh, we've got about eight or ten night storage areas and they don't want to pay that, so they want to just put it on instead of the.
No, they can't do it permanent.
Well, they can, they can park it in their side yard or behind the, the house if, if it doesn't go straight down the hill.
So it's not visible through the street, is that it?
No, you can, you can park it in the side yard. You just, by our ordinance, you just can't park it in the front yard or on the driveway. So if somebody parks it alongside their house, like the one house on Holiday Island Drive, uh, that, that would be okay.
But does, do they have to follow the setback rules? Can they, I mean, um, I mean, you couldn't park an R V the side of your house, can you?
No.
He didn't have.
Yeah, neighbors.
Not many places gonna have that much room.
I was gonna say.
I don't have room.
Oh, we, I don't either, but there's.
No, you have to be on your property.
I understand, but can you be right up to the line?
Yeah, cause it's not a permanent structure. So you could, you could park it in the easement.
I'll copy the area code and give it to.
So that would be something that Aaron would address once we get the district court agreement.
You know the judge.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, and, uh, council member comments?
I got a couple. A month or two ago, when we had some problems with the fire board thing, I called Carroll County Solid Waste. I talked to George O'Bright, and that's his name, isn't it?
Yeah.
And he said, well, they would start, they would, would build another cardboard container. They, you know, they have to modify it. And in the interim, he said he would be picking, he would pick it up on Monday, Wednesdays and Friday. They missed Monday. Yeah, I, I, I've called over there about three, four times now and told, reminded them on what they said they would do. But I don't seem to be getting anywhere with the second unit. Since you're on the board over there, could you address that?
We have a meeting, I believe, on the twenty-eighth.
See what they're having on that, because they did, it's a mess down there. It filled up today and now they're dumping it out in the, on the parking lot. And into the, uh, part-time users. Yep. On that, I, I still, you know, we've had a couple of people try to verify that the zip code change is working. But I don't know whether it is or not because I was filing my income tax Saturday, I think it was. I keyed in my in, my address and it put Eureka Springs in the, in the city. I was able to override it. So I don't, I don't mind. You know, we, I, you know, went to Kyle Weaver and he went through his testing thing and says it's working, but I, you know, I'm filing income tax and they tried to put me back in Eureka Springs.
I think the problem is that there, you know, the, the postal service database isn't linked
Right.
to all these other databases.
And they said they'd do that fifteen.
They said they would send out the information to all the major mailers and probably other governmental agencies and stuff like that. But until they all update their database, it's not gonna be.
I think, I think it's better than I, I, I don't know.
That would probably be your tax software that, that would be your tax software that brought that up.
It's probably, I think, it probably was part of Turbo.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would take a while to get that updated.
Anyway, the other, have you, have you addressed contract we have with the city on repairing road cuts? That road cut out on State Line is still just like all the other ones, stuck as a cop.
All right, I'll, I'll have to bring that up. I have not heard of it. Had any discussions about road cuts? Thank you. All right, any other commissioner comments or council member comments? Sorry.
I had one.
Three-year flashback.
I, I think I asked you earlier about, uh, posting the deputy and fire department reports and on the website. I think that'd be, I think people would like to see that.
Sure.
And, uh, so if you don't, if you don't mind if I do the deputy one, obviously, right?
Right.
Okay, I will check with the fire department, make sure they're okay with us posting it. I said this is a post.
It's a public document. I mean, once they send it to the House, it's a public document, so.
So.
I don't think there'll be any problems with it.
Anyway, I was thinking about, um, we have limited main menu items on our website and I think I can take the, um, the building and code enforcement and change that to departments, like city departments. And then we can hang stuff off of it that way. Is that sound reasonable?
Sure.
Sound reasonable until I try to use it to, see if it, if it's easy to find or not.
Okay.
Uh, you know, that's the main thing is that, is it easy for, is it intuitive for people?
Yeah, it's intuitive.
Yeah, when they're looking for stuff on the, cause I, I.
But at least when you scan, scroll over it, it shows the dropdown right here, so you see what it is. We'll try it and see.
Okay. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, one briefly, uh, I made before, I'll do it again. Uh, I am really concerned about us burying our heads in the sand over these social media points. Not responding to them. I mean, they're ludicrous. I mean, they, they've gone from hacking H I C for building the Taj Mahal of bath houses to, uh, shift into the city because they can't build it, blaming us for enforcing the building code. I mean, the, the misinformation is just unbelievable. Uh, one of the candidates that ran, uh, on the platform of abolishing H I C and, uh, abolishing, uh, for fighting the corporations, uh, said that, uh, city, uh, people, council people are hierarchical. Well, that, no, they said they, that they were lining their pockets. That they, they campaigned the fact that we'll be getting all this money and, uh, that, uh, it led people to believe that H I C would go away. No.
Nobody said that.
I, I know, but, you know, when, when he says that and fifty others pipe in and nobody sets the record straight, I mean, they, it's, it's. I mean, they, they've got, they've got, uh, I mean, they're setting a narrative on a lot of things that would, I guess.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't know what you would do about it unless you want to bring it to town council and we agree to respond to these things.
Well, I think the mayor or his designate should respond and say that, that's B S, that's not true.
I understand exactly what you're saying, because it frustrates me, maybe with all these comments, but.
I, I mean, and they posted, I, I, I don't know, there's ten or twelve, uh, groups on Facebook that are like Holiday Island, uh, citizens for responsibility, uh, that just.
That's, that's, that's problem number one probably is that, you know, I used to be on the Facebook pages, um, sites or whatever they call them, where, where these people were active. And, and, uh, and we did respond to one or two of them. So what, what do they do? They create a new Facebook page that you're not, you're not.
We've got to report them to administrators. I mean, there's one that I, I'm not gonna mention her name, but we all know what it is. She's posted under five or six different damn names. And, and just, you know, she'll get bumped off of one or, uh, and change her name and, and it's just crazy.
I can tell you too, Suzanne Childers did her best to respond to all the misinformation about the city and got nowhere. All, all they do is end up calling everybody a liar.
Yeah, just abs them up.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, here before though, they, they, they were preaching to their choir.
Yeah.
But the longer it goes, you know, but, you know, it was a group of twenty-five, six months ago, now they've got a committee of two hundred or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, I'm just saying, it's a problem.
Where's that come from? I think one of the best things that you've done, uh, for me as a board of commissioner member is to see the mayor's newsletter, mayor's letter. And they're very good and they come out often enough, they don't specifically, Jerry, attack what you just said, but it puts out in a clear, very good language, this is what we're doing, this is what we're looking at, we're going forward with these plans. And if you do that like once a month and they're very accurate and very honest, uh, that's about all you can do.
Well, I, I, I think that's a good idea if, if we took it one step further that you may read on social media that this or that, you know, here's the, here's the.
There's the facts.
Here are the facts. I mean, you don't have to get down and dirty with them, but somewhere you can get.
The Democrat Gazette puts out this thing, I think it's in the Sunday paper, that says something to the effect that news that didn't happen.
Didn't happen.
And, and, and what they, what they react to is stuff that's floating around on social media and then, and then they say what the reality is. I suppose we could do, we could do something similar to that.
But with the people that need to read it, read it, that's all I can mention.
Well, it's really not important whether or not the maysayers read it, I'm sorry for using that word. But it's more important for people listening to them, if they're.
You know, eventually they.
For new residents.
And, and that's, that's the real concern because more and more people are saying that, that are responding to their comments like, ooh, I'm glad I read this. I was thinking about buying here.
Yeah, I've read several of them, but they've decided not to build here because of the comments that were, they said.
If I could say, I've been, I've been doing land projects for forty years. And it's been Arkansas, South Carolina, Georgia, Colorado, you name it. And you have them. They just change names and change faces and they're everywhere. And if you start fighting back, it's kind of like the car waiting. It sticks to, I sticks to you, you stick to it. And because it's, it's like a, it's like a little child asking why. You, and you're telling why and then from that response, he asks why again. And so it just keeps on rolling. It just.
Well, I think, I think we could have something like, uh, you know, news that didn't happen, uh, thing where we, every once in a week or something like that.
To me, it comes across flippant. I mean.
Too flippant.
Too flippant. I, I mean, I mean, do an addendum to, to the mayor's message or, you know, here, here are the facts or.
Or how about setting the record straight?
Setting the record straight, something like that.
That, we can call it anything.
Yeah.
Could we maybe just put together the top ten or whatever disinformation there are with a standard answer? And then the, the general public can copy and paste that every time one of these things come up.
No, that's a good idea.
Instead of trying to interpret it in our way, the general public, we would have the facts as put together by commissioners. And, you know, when somebody says, well, y'all said that H I C would go away. We all know that that wasn't the truth, but we need an official response.
That, I think that needs to come from the mayor. Yeah, I think it's up to all of us just to, uh,
Spark them or something.
Spark them and send them to us.
And we could prove that's not right because that, that question was in our, uh, F A Q document when it was fifty pages long, so.
And every meeting that you have.
Yes, and every meeting that we had, right?
And also, there was one more thing. They posted one day that we were bringing, that, that, that city was bringing in a couple of thousand dollars a month, which was way off. You and I had a conversation the other day about that. And, but they were saying, well, y'all said you were gonna make all these thousands of dollars and here you brought in just a couple of thousand bucks. And that's just not the, the fact. And so, you know, put together your top five or top ten as an official response.
Yeah, I guess nobody noticed the six hundred thousand that was spent on the road work.
Exactly.
Was done so quickly, nobody noticed.
Karen, you just.
They chose, they chose to.
Bringing those to the, in having an agenda item that we, you said these are the five things.
No, just spark them, send them to David.
Cause I don't, I don't do Facebook anymore and I don't do Nextdoor.
But you hear people out on the street talking, out on the golf course. And if you hear somebody saying, you know, something just wild ass crazy, uh, excuse my language, I, I mean, just tip them to that because.
Am I tipping? They can choose one of those clubs.
I don't bother with that. I usually just correct them on the spot, but I'm not, I don't do the.
But you're not playing golf with some of these people?
No.
That, that's the thing.
Well, they, they don't go anywhere, they don't do anything. I don't think they play, that many of them play golf or I would know of.
No, no, no.
I don't think they do anything or I'm just kidding. They don't, they don't participate in any.
All right, I'll, you know, if you, if you want to start sending me all the examples because I don't, I, I, I don't, I'm not on those sites anymore where, where all these people have migrated to. Uh, the, the Facebook pages, uh, groups that, that I'm still attached to hardly post anything anymore.
See, I, I'm the same way. I thought of, cause I've got blood pressure issues. I don't wanna read that stuff. I'm completely off of all that.
I read it and I get mad about it. I don't respond to them.
May I say that, may I say this one thing? That, um, they started with these town.
That, uh, they started with these town hall meetings and first one they had, there's a lot of people there. Second one they had, two people, and last one they had, they were sitting down, there are chairs. Oh, were there three? I am sorry, two.
It's a lot easier to sit behind your computer in anonymity and, and swing arrows at people. All right, I will, I will come up with a proposal on how we're gonna respond to, to this information. In the meantime, if you want to start sending it to me, I'll, I'll start compiling something. Any other public comments? Or what, we're on council member comments. Any other council member comments? And we'll move on to, uh, uh, meeting schedules next. I will probably call a special meeting when I get that district court agreement signed.
We're getting together at the workshop on the twenty-seventh.
The planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we could if, uh.
If you call it as a march meeting, you do it. Two out of the others.
That's true. Anytime. Okay.
All right, then our regular meeting is May seventh.
The sixteenth.
The sixteenth. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some.
I made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Come on, turn. Second.
Who? I thought we were gonna be here all night.
Turn me a second today.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote for adjournment.
All right. We, we want to take that, we're gonna.